We're going to start off with public hearings. So the first one up is the supplemental Public School Response Fund, one and two, and Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplement Appropriations.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, Ruben, are you?
Sure. So this is just basically the board's opportunity to accept these funds that have been provided to us. We do this with all of our federal funds. I can tell you that the SRF-2 funds is just shy of 1.1 million. Those funds can be utilized for things such as parking if need be, air filtration systems, HVAC systems, things of that nature. Certainly can be utilized for educational reasons to help with learners who need to have programming to make up any loss that has occurred during this timeframe. So that's what that would be. It's about... There is another round after this that we have not received, that we will be receiving. If you take our allotment that we just received and multiply it by about... Oh, I think it's a... I'm not sure what the multiplication is at this point in time, but basically the fact that we'd be around 2.3 to 2.5 million that we would get for that, and that would be able to be utilized all the way through 2023 for the same purposes. And that was under this last session that they had with the funds that went out. Again, we'll have to come back for that. That's not what we're talking about. We'll talk about some of the usages of that perhaps a little bit later on down the road, kind of what we might like to do from a facilities perspective and so forth, but that would be the board accepting the federal funds. We have reached out in the past for the first round of funds that we had to our local private schools. They have declined to take whatever share that they had wanted or were entitled to, and that has been a consistent thing for the years anyhow. This specific one, it was not necessary for us to do.
So this is the second round of funding?
This is the second SRF, yeah, SRF-2.
Okay. And then we'll be... And the one you just referred to is the third that we'll learn about later.
Yes, there's a timetable of receiving that. It had to do with a certain number of days. Once we have our reopening framework and moving to five days and so forth, they would release those funds. But I would expect that in the next couple of months, we'll receive those funds. And I've already asked John, who is our facilities manager, to start looking into HVAC upgrades across the entire district. Now that we have... I'll talk about this later on. Now that we have information from the people that we hired on our HVAC system, we would certainly between the two have enough money to be able to get everything done that we would want to get done, which is neat. I'm sure that will take some time, but that would be great.
That would be great, yeah.
Understanding that some of the funds would have to be, especially in the third round, will have to be utilized for the purpose of catch-up growth for our learners. But there's... It still will be fine, given the numbers that we have.
All right.
Just let everybody know Kerry Broderick is on the Zoom call, and she said that she's available to answer any questions, anybody.
Ruben, can I ask you to elaborate on that quick statement you just said? The third round of funds are contingent upon moving to five full days? Is that what I just heard? Like where did that statement get? Am I correct?
The commissioner, or during one of the sessions, talked about the need for the district to have a kind of a reopening plan. It was very vague, because I think we have the reopening plan already, so I don't know why they wouldn't just give us the funds. So I'm not entirely sure what... It was implied return to full in-person. But there has not been any specific detail that was implied to me. My understanding is that we already have that plan, and that we continue to update it as we go along, and there's no issue to have to develop another one. But they have not given us those funds.
Oh.
And that's not the one we're talking about here, right here.
Is there any more discussion? I'd like to make a motion.
A second?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept SPSRF number one and number two and CRSA at SRF-2 funds.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Was that... We have a motion from Charlie. It was seconded. Was it Christine or Lisa?
Lisa.
Lisa, okay, thank you. And I'll do a roll call vote.
Before we do that, we need questions from anyone in the public.
The public, I was gonna say, yeah.
We do... Kerry Broderick has raised her hand. I would also want to allow her the opportunity to use her microphone to take some questions or... Marcia, would you rather take Kerry Broderick right now, or would you rather just open the floor to public comments?
All right, sorry. That static is there. And I couldn't hear what you said.
Can you hear me any better now?
I can hear you. It's just still the static in the background, but go ahead, try it again.
We already have a hand raised from Kerry Broderick. Would you like to take her, or would we like to open it up to the audience first?
Let's have Kerry explain what it is she wants to explain, and then...
All right, Kerry, you should be able to speak at this point.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Basically, I just wanted to make sure that you opened it up to the public so that they could ask any questions if they needed to before a motion was made. In addition, I wanted to just explain to any of the board members who are new that accepting this as unanticipated revenue, what it allows the district to do is to expend funds in excess of the approved operating budget for the expenditures that are eligible in these particular grants and awards that we're speaking about tonight. So we can only expend funds that are eligible expenditures, and we receive the revenue basically as offsetting. So there's no impact to the taxpayers when it comes to accepting this revenue and expending the expenditures because they offset each other. So hopefully that makes sense.
Thank you, Kerry.
You're welcome.
Yep, and you're gonna stay on so that if there are questions from the public, you can help, yes?
Sure.
Great. All right, Nick.
All right, so for everybody who's in attendance, we have some people in-house and also a bunch of folks on Zoom. The typical kind of public comment format for this session, if you use the hand raise feature, if you are online, first, last name, and town of residence, please, before you make your comment. So we are officially open to comments. All right, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, all right, then I'll continue with the roll call vote. John?
Hi.
Thank you. Patty? Thank you. Lisa?
Hi.
Thank you. Christine?
Hi.
Thank you. Charlie? And I say aye. So that passes 6-0-0. And next up, we have the Championship Trust Fund expenditure. We want to use some of the money from there for banners.
So this is a request from Mr. Springfield, the athletic director. As our girls won the state championship this year, another second straight undefeated season, that to be able to utilize, this is... So this has happened several times before, and we will use the championship fund for the purposes that are outlined in this document. School banner, et cetera.
I make a motion that we accept the request to money from the championship fund to purchase banners for the girls' basketball championship and twenty states championship flags for the players, such as the managers. I'm interested in any set of purchase. For like $653.50.
Okay, thank you, Patty. A second?
I'll second that.
Is that Lisa?
Lisa.
Okay, thank you.
You would need to ask if public had any comments about it.
Yep.
All right, so same process that I just explained. So if anybody has any comments, feel free to raise your hand. All right, again, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and I'll do roll call vote. Lisa?
Hi.
Thank you. Charlie? Thank you. Patty? Thank you. John?
Hi.
Thank you. Christine?
Hi.
Thank you. And I say aye, so that passes 6-0-0. And that also concludes the public hearing for tonight. Hearings, plural. Okay, so now we're ready to go into public session of the board meeting. And we're gonna start with our pledge of allegiance. So if everyone will join me in standing for the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, on changes to the agenda. None?
Just where?
Yes, to add to them.
Yep. Yep, so we need to add two items to the consent agenda, but I do not have both names, so I apologize for that. We would like to add Kim Baker for the position of Director of Guidance at the Little School High School and in the role of tennis coach.
Girls' tennis coach.
Girls' tennis coach.
Gloria Morrison.
Gloria Morrison.
Okay. All right, so that's two additions to the consent agenda. One for the Director of Counseling and one for the girls' tennis. All right, thank you. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, we'll go to public comments then. We'll do up to 15 minutes.
All right, I know I've already explained it multiple times, but just to be clear, first, last name, town of residence, raise your hand. Or if you're in the audience, also, I guess, raise your hand, please, please. And we can take public comments for 15 minutes as the board chair stated. All right, I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay. All righty then. Um, well, we'll move on now to the superintendent's report then.
All right, so the superintendent's report will be kind of in two ways. One, that we just applied from this little part of the verbal. We'll talk about the board is updated on a regular basis with the work that the permanent group is doing with our facilities and the architectural designs and so forth, and also a little bit of what I talked about before with the air exchange and the air inlet system and so forth of our school. So that will be what that will be what the superintendent's report will be on tonight. Thank you for that individual who said to speak up a little bit. Thank you. All right, so if we look at the agenda for this, the COVID-19 update, we'll spend a few minutes looking at some COVID-19 trends. That's what we've done whenever we've talked about this. Together, travel restrictions and the loosening of those. The state guidance changes to close contact. Some of these items, we'll talk about later on in the evening. Governor's Executive Order Number 89, and then our readiness for that order. As every school district is now, after receiving that out of the blue, has had to consider where they stand with the ability to make that shift so quickly. Criteria for change. If we were to move forward with this essay, that would be changing up the matrix a little bit. Same structure, just, you know, you'll see. And then some framework recommendations. I have some recommendations for travel. And then the concept of returning to five-day in-person week, which is what the executive order number 89 is about. Then, you know, the board will have opportunity to make some movement, not make some movements, change, you know, take the suggestion of the superintendent or to make its own change. So the first thing, if we look at New Hampshire COVID data, this is as of yesterday. I was able to go on there today and change these. I made a presentation last Wednesday and Thursday, but once the governor's guidance came through, it made a lot of this not very important. So I had to change it up a little bit, but this would be important to look at. Over the course of the last seven days, that's what this is right here in New Hampshire. We've seen an uptick. It makes sense that we can continue to see that uptick. This is me personally projecting that, given the fact that we had a lot of gatherings, I would assume, over this past holiday weekend. So we can see a little bit of... That being said, Cheshire County. If we were to scroll to Cheshire County COVID-19 data, we can see that over the last 14 days, which is what I was able to find for a trend, we would see a flattening, maybe a little bit of a downturn, but a flattening overall. The color of our county and around really the greater Manamuck region has gone down a little bit. But if we were to look at our local data, and just that looks purely at positive COVID cases as of yesterday, we can see that Ridge and Jaffrey, I believe it's the eighth and 18 there. And most of you received another phone call from you today at 6:15, indicating that there was another case that we are aware of. So those numbers will continue, but some will fall off, some will grow. So we're taking a look at that. But we have consistently, if we were looking at the data from last week, we were actually the hotbed of the entire region, entire greater Manamuck region, which goes beyond Cheshire County. So it's important that whenever we make these decisions that we're talking about tonight, that we look at and consider that, because it does impact our schools significantly and our processes that we have outlined, our policies and the agreements that we've had with our teachers association and our support staff association. Well then, Governor Sununu, just quickly, what that's about is that our framework that we have currently requires an individual who travels outside of England to quarantine for 10 days. That has been in place since the beginning, really. The governor has lifted that, I think, a couple of weeks ago. And so this is the first real opportunity the board has had to be able to look at this, to... There are some decisions that you can make. Continue on. New Hampshire DPHS, Department of Health Services, changes the close contact definition as well. And their close contact definition will be allowing three feet of distance in a controlled classroom setting and remain six feet for uncontrolled environment. So an uncontrolled environment will be, if you have an art class that you're moving around and there's no set seating arrangement, like we are all on a seating chart right now, basically. But if you have a class that's not gonna be like that, then the six feet would stay in place when doing any contact tracing and things of that nature. My note down at the bottom there just means this is not referring to the district's practices of social distancing. Then there's Governor Sununu's latest order. We just got the information this morning, actually. Via email is the one it all meant. But basically, all New Hampshire schools, he's stating it must provide in-person instruction five days per week. For all students who elect such an option, we have had our change of environment survey that went out. We did have some give and take on that. We have those numbers. A fourth quarter is coming up. It's important to note that districts can transition, however. Schools or segments of a school population to remote for a period of up to two days. Anything longer requires Department of Ed approval. So for instance, you've given me approval that states, hey, if, like, for instance, we have a situation where I don't have enough teachers within the building, I can call a remote couple of days. It could be a week if I know that they're gonna be quarantining at other time. We would do that. This takes away my ability to do that. So it allows me two days, which is the practice that I've used anyway, because we've had that Wednesday, we've had that remote day to be able to kind of put on the tails or the other side of the beginning of it. And then the governor's order takes effect on Monday, April 19th, so our next school board meeting date, basically, is one of this. And it says to start that week. Yes?
Rover, I know you mentioned that you consulted with our attorneys. Does the governor have the authority to issue this in this way? What are our attorneys doing?
Well, the New Hampshire School Board Association sent out a note saying that they believe he has the power to do this. What I was focusing on with our attorney had more to do with some of these conversations around three feet, six feet, and all that kind of stuff. Like, for instance, a lot of schools, if they're to do this, you know, I can think of many off the top of my head, in order to make this happen, they would have to completely shift their social distancing minimums. And so that, the issue that arises there is that when doing this order, that he didn't put into law anything about that social distancing piece right there. Yeah, CDC has said you can do three feet here, and I have another slide on that, six feet here and all that kind of stuff. But a lot of school districts, when they develop their MLAs, the memorandum of agreements with their associations, the teachers' associations, support staff associations, and some districts have other associations as well, that they've put in, for instance, six feet. So that, this does not give a school district permission to change that. It doesn't give them even anything to stand on. So it's kind of a loose order from that standpoint. We'll talk about that, how it relates to us in a little bit. So, you know, the school board can say, hey, let's go forward. You can ask for a waiver of this. It really comes down to if you ask for a waiver, you need to have some good reason to do so. And just because you ask for a waiver, doesn't mean you can be granted a waiver. Certainly, if you ask for a waiver, you don't have rationale that it's good enough to really warrant one that is likely to be turned down. I've connected with everyone that I possibly could that would have any kind of bearing. Certainly, our bus company, there's a lot of districts right now who don't have bus drivers hired for that Wednesday. That becomes a significant issue, because by law, schools have to provide transportation to, certainly, up to high school. So they, but you want to give, you know, provide transportation for all your students. We, the way we arrange things with our bus company this year allows us to ensure us of having bus drivers. So that is not an issue for Jack or any other school district. We thought that there was a possibility somewhere down the line that if we went five days, we would need to make sure that that happened. We kept the bus drivers going during our remote Wednesdays to provide food to the community. And so we don't have a bus driver shortage for the school day. Separate from that, we do have a bus driver shortage for after-school curricular, extracurricular activities. Different situation. You know, I think that when we look at it, our community, Jaffrey and Ridge, we've continued to leave the COVID-19 positive rate in the greater Manamuck region. I think it's important to note that. What does that do? Well, it means that I'm making a lot of phone calls. We don't have any documented cases of transmission within the school. It certainly could take place, but we've been fortunate that way. Our nurses have done extraordinarily good job. You know, has not always been taken well, but they've done what they needed to do, and they've complied with, to a T, with what New Hampshire DPHS has asked them to do for contact tracing. They've done a great job keeping privacy of learners and adults. That, just that private, so that we can do that for people and dignity is a help. The, as the last survey, I said, we know, we've been working with data all year long. We've worked with the data ahead of time to build our framework, find out what was likely and what was not likely. The data has actually told us the truth every single time. We've been able to predict what was gonna take place based upon multiple data points. If you get three data points, you get patterned, you can pretty much make a prediction. We do not need to reduce, and we should not reduce, our social distancing within the school. Anywhere, elementary, middle school, or high school, be less than 15. One, because it's the safest thing in the beginning during this timeframe, and if we're still in a pandemic, then there's no reason to shift that the other way, if we're talking about safety. Having read some mathematical articles on this early on, there's a difference. I understand that it's really, it's a mathematically significant difference, but there is a difference between two feet, sorry, two yards or two meters and one meter with the ability to transmit. True, less so at the elementary level. So the other reason is we, or one of those districts that signed an MOA that states six feet will be the minimum. And so we do not have the right to change that. And we do have the capacity in our schools. We have looked at our elementary schools in Ridge and Jaffrey, our middle school and our high school here. I can say that the high school has plenty of room. Our middle school, we could, if we had, for instance, students who are homeschool, come back, we could have a little bit of difficulty within grades six and eight, depending where they landed, but it would seem like it would still be fine. depending where they landed, but it would seem like it would still be fine. At Jeffrey grade school, we're at capacity in one class and almost at capacity in another class, given our framework of up to 14 learners in a room. Shifts being social distancing and so forth. That being said, if those, in those exact same grade levels at Ridge Memorial School, we have ample room. And so to be able to provide schooling to someone coming in, we would have the ability to do so within our district. It's, that's not an issue. Our principals indicate that it's a possibility. I've asked them to start to work with their staffs to see what that would look like. To many, it might seem easy to just shift to five days from four. It is true that because of our processes that we've had all year long, it is easier for this district to do that than many others. There's so many reasons for that. That being said, there's contractual obligations with planning time and a variety of factors that need to be taken, you know, into consideration. So when we do this, the Wednesday may very look, will be a very good, meaningful day for learners. It might look a little different than perhaps the other four days. You might still focus on, for instance, you might still focus on a getting kids caught up with their work throughout the course of the year that they've been maybe a little behind on due to some rote action. We have, we're entering into an assessment time of the year. SATs, some TSATs, the state assessments and so forth. So there can be some support and helping in the areas of mathematics and in literacy. Obviously, some other courses, courses, you could actually have a normal schedule. I think the elementaries might look at that. They'll have to extend the minutes of their specials back to a normal situation to make some of this work. But they still have another week, maybe two, to be able to really work it out so that's working for all individuals. I will state, and you know, sometimes it's difficult for people in the community to understand this. This has been a stressful year for so many. And I would say that, again, maybe, it may seem simple to go from four to five. It's certainly a lot better than going from two, for instance, to five. Or A V weeks and all that kind of situation that is pretty, pretty much out there. We've been very fortunate. It still is another change. And when the change is forced upon you like that, it's very difficult. So just understanding that it is a difficult thing to do as we go forward. I will say that the governor did not tell the truth when he first presented this. It's important to note, because we were going, I was going to, my presentation that I did have earlier had us as a, made ten, we have made ten starting five days. And the rationale for that is because we knew, and we worked really hard to make certain that all of our staff, at the earliest possible setting, time setting we could, our teachers and our support staff that work with students were given priority to get their vaccinations first. And then as a result, you then come back after, they give you another date right after that. And based upon that, and then the others that, you know, other individuals had already had their shot, and then other people went on to the state website and got theirs and so forth. We know that we would be 100% fully vaccinated by that time in May. So basically, after the April break, we would have been in good shape. So when he says that every hall teachers were fully vaccinated on April 19, that's not true. Full vaccination, and he knows this, is two weeks following your final shot. And so that was a little misleading. I think that also was painful for many people as a decision to brought down. Certainly, these superintendents were not ever told that it would be a big place. Again, it is what it is, change is what it is. And our kids do deserve to be vaccinated five days a week. So I'm not at all discounting that. The way this was done was a little tough. So we do have the capacity to do it. We have the capacity to increase our disinfecting. And we'll be working on doing that, ramping that up significantly more. Yes, John?
Just wondering about the block schedule. I realize that there's still decisions to be made. I'm sure you're working with David on all this, but with the block schedule and your conception continue as it is now?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know if that's what will take place or not. I'm going to say, I assume that it will continue to do that. The reason for that would be to limit the number of transitions during the school day. So the number of places that a learner is at. You know, Wednesday might not be a block type of day. It might be more of a regular day. What I can tell you, what I can tell you is that Mr. Dustin met with his team leaders today for this school. Both Susan and Kelly have met with some other teachers from the other school. And some union representatives and so forth to be able to start to talk about what possibilities there are. And there have been people who have given some solutions in those conversations that I, I don't know the extent of them. It's been a busy day, but I'll get rephoned up tomorrow.
Ruben, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The governor's emergency order today stated that all students shall be able to choose whether to come back five days, or if they want to stay with hybrid, or if they want to be fully remote. And it's going to be a, basically a student choice or a family choice, what they want to do. What is, that was done today, so I know you won't have a perfect answer, but what do you imagine that could look like for teachers accommodating fully remote hybrid kids who might not want to come back on Wednesdays and kids who are on Wednesdays? Would that be an asynchronous solution, or what, what did that look like?
Oh yeah, no, I mean, absolutely. If people choose not to come back to Wednesday, there's no way there's going to be contact happening during that timeframe because the teachers would be here working with the individuals. We have not put into place a situation where we have had teachers to, who have had screaming in at the exact same time. There's lots of reasons why we, we don't do that. One of them is the complete stress of the matter. Another reason is because it also impacts privacy issues when it happens that can cause the districts some problems. We do already have the fully online module. We have asked people whether they want to remain there. We actually have had people say in the fourth quarter, we want to go to that. And we have the individuals who are in person. So we would send out a message saying that we're going in five days in person. That's the notification. Yes, if there's a, if they want to continue with that asynchronous approach, you know, that would, for that one day, that would be fine, understanding that they're not going to get the level of support that they would have. But we can't have that, the teacher work. It's why we did our framework the way we did in the first place and had two options. Because if you throw too many options in there, you can't do anything well. And so this is very similar to that. It's, it's not, it wasn't worded well. It was not worded well as past and it was not fully thought. But the sentiment behind it for getting kids back to school, and we've all had the conversations about social emotional wellbeing and so forth, is not, is not a bad thing. If we could go to the next slide, great. So in order to do this, you know, we'd be looking for a criteria change. It would be basically the same matrix, except that we've just changed it all to in-person emergency order 89 instead of the JR CSDs hybrid. We'd have in-person emergency order 89. That means it's in person, whatever that would look like. And then we would still maintain that we have, if the school impact is high, that we'd be able to go to remote learning. And when school impact is high, it could be lots of learners who have been positive. But certainly, more likely is if we don't have the staffing. Once, once staffing goes, and it's not always numbers of staffing, it's the who is the staffing, sometimes the combination, we have to go. But that being said, we can only do it two days at a time. Anything more than that, we have to contact Department of Education about and move forward. So basically, the matrix just takes into consideration, order 89. We have to be sure that we are following all contracts or planning time, minimum planning time, things of that nature. All of this. Let me switch to the next one. So the recommendations, lifting the travel quarantine rule. The board options, you can lift it now. It's been in place for quite some time. You can lift it for April break or anytime. I guess there's another option, maybe not between that. You don't have to lift it until another time in the future. So you can wait till the end of the school year. That would be your choice to do. My recommendation, based upon data, is, and knowing when our staff is completely vaccinated, is to lift it for April break and beyond. That there's a little reason to maintain it, which then what we would do is we would take it out of our, or change the framework language around it. We'd also take it off our pickup control, other questions, things of that nature. That's what we'd end up doing. It is already in our framework that if a person's fully vaccinated, that it doesn't apply that much with, it's important to note that. The, you know, the, the numbers in the area continue to be high and possibly increasing, you know. Certainly, it's, I put an email out to this, and maybe a week or two ago, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, that stated, you know, our trends haven't matched the trends of the area. The area as greater Mendanok region, which is a couple, you know, portions of other communities as well, other counties, has been going down and we have not. And so what I said is that we haven't continued on with those trends going down. It is, in some cases, the trend has actually been upward. Again, as a school district, we've been fortunate. We've done well. We've followed our processes. We've kept things clean. We've done it. It's a lot of work, but you know, that's the rationale for that. If you feel that it should be lifted now because there's not, you know, value, that's, that's also your, your choice. And if you think that, no, you know what, they're just not lifting it. That's also an option too. Change the definition of close contact. There's a document later on that talks about what that would look like. Once again, this would not be the school's practice on close contact. We would not be trying to reduce it to under six feet. That's not permitted, given our agreements. And it's not permitted, in my opinion, due to what makes most sense. We chose that, we were firm on that in the very beginning. While there were several other schools that did choose to start off with three, not necessarily in this region, but other regions of the state. And we just didn't think that was appropriate. I still don't agree with this. The, so that's for contact tracing. It gives the nurses a little more flexibility when they work with DPHS. And if they talk to New Hampshire DPHS, that's the information they're going to be getting any time. Then if we could scroll down. And the plan for five days a week in-person model for those already in-person starting the week of April 19, 2021. You can comply with the order, so that would be one choice. You can request a waiver from this. I will say that there are some other districts in this area that are going to likely move forward with requesting a waiver. There are reasons, I've seen some sample letters that have been out there. I don't believe any board has acted on this yet. So I'm not saying that anyone else is doing that. But if you can think that there are some schools that have been in-person two days a week instead of what we've been doing all year long, or in parts of the year, or what have you, to get this done that quickly, I can probably, it took us two months to get our first framework done. You know, and it's fine, but this, this is a complete change for those individuals. So, but that is your, your choice if you think that. This is not something that we think we're ready for. Yes?
Ruben, just really following up on some of the things you've been saying.
Yes.
You know, you said the rationale for asking for a waiver until May 10 does not seem to exist in our district. But I thought you made a good case for asking for a waiver until May 3, based on that two weeks for the vaccines to come into effect.
Yeah, so, so here's, here's how I, how I look at it. We have the ability, numbers-wise, personnel-wise and so forth, and also framework-wise and facility-wise, to implement this on the 19th. We do. The rationale for May 10 was, and the same would be for May 3. I guess you'd say the only reason why I wouldn't have chosen May 3 was because I was putting in kind of an imaginary 10-day quarantine period from the travel of the, the April break. But that's, that's another option. That certainly makes more sense from the ability for the district to do what it needs to do. Can, can we get it done on the 19th? Yeah, okay. If I thought, yeah, the one reason, the one reason to go, you know, against the order for this particular district would be that people would not be fully vaccinated. That being said, the argument against that is that they're already in four days per week. So it's just one more day of the same guidelines that you have instead. There, there's mixed views within, you know, the teaching rounds. It's not, you know, there aren't, there's no one fully one way or the other. You know, there are a lot of, for instance, elementary teachers would love to have that middle, and I'm not saying that middle school and high school wouldn't love to have it either. I'm just, this is an easier case to have conversation with because I've had those conversations. Is, you know, to have continuity all the way through is, is helpful. So there's some like who point to that and say that would be a blessing. And others that, every school, it impacts the school very differently because they're not, we have a framework that governs the work of each school. So that was a district framework. And then what we did differently in a lot of places was then we developed our own school guidelines. So there's handbooks for every single school. Different schools are different, Ridge of a town and as a community and as a school is different than Jeffrey grade school. This is, and that's fine. You want those differences. But, so there's some, there's some differences within the language of the agreements. And then the middle school, high school is completely different in how it operates. Not even close to the same. And I think that's the last slide, am I correct?
Yeah.
That's a lot of information there. It's a long superintendent report. Lots, lots happened within a week. I can just give you a brief update on the rest of the superintendent report, which would be that Turner Group has provided us the, at least a preliminary, if not a detailed assessment of our equipment. Most of the equipment being on our roofs, our rooftop units. Have given us suggestions as to how much it would cost to repair or completely get new equipment and install that. John has some questions out back to them regarding to air conditioning and these new units, would they, new units include air conditioning? Would that be extra, that sort of thing, just to get details. We have had more movement on the, or we've had conversations every Friday. I now have a conversation myself, John, Harry, with Turner to talk about the various pieces of work that they're doing. One of which has to do with the building trades, what we are going to be moving toward construction trades area. And so the improvement of that area. We went, myself, John LeClaire, who's the facilities manager, Mr. Dustin went last week to visit Concord because they have been implementing this different program for several years. Have had extraordinary success. Numbers have increased. We looked at their space. They utilize their space well, but it's nothing super, you know, modern. It was, it was a joy to talk to that teacher and see how he's, you know, he's being able to navigate the different curriculum. which is a broader curriculum, whereas construction, sorry, sorry. Building trades has more to do with carpentry. That's where we're at. Construction trades has to do with electrical, plumbing, carpentry, masonry, um, H, HVAC, et cetera. And so there are a lot of different pathways. Since we, even though we still have some work to get that done, we've had an incredible number of people wanting to join in that from our school in part, but also from Conval. We haven't had Conval since for quite some time. So that's exciting. And, uh, I'll just leave that as the report.
All right. Thanks. Um, do you want us to be acting here on the, your recommendations?
Nick, which recommendations do we want them to consider acting on later on?
So every, everything that Ruben just discussed, insert these three recommendations.
Yeah.
Uh, but in some ways, form this reopening framework.
Okay. Okay.
It's a lot of the same information. It's just written in a different way. Um, so you guys could act, you know, if you wanted, but if you wanted to wait till the discussion period and, you know, look over this document, that's also allowed.
That, that's fine. Let's take care of it during the. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Marcia, did you hear that?
Lisa wants to ask a question.
Yeah, was that okay?
Yeah.
Um, just in terms of the court, um, we're about to head into district wide state assessments. Can you give us a timeline for when they're starting here and when you expect them to be over? And this is for grades three, six, eight, I don't remember which grades across the district are doing that SAS.
Yeah, I don't have those exact dates right now. I know that the, um, it's definitely in the spring, the SATs, I believe, were set for the week actually that we kicking the gear with this five day week. And the reason why I'm aware of that is because it's supposed to be on Wednesday. Um, and so there's some planning that needs to take place now to be able to get the proctors that we would need in order to make that happen. That was, that's, that's one of those difficult scenarios for the high school. Um, for the elementary, I think that they are waiting till May, um, to be able to, uh, do, so it'll be the month of May. For the elementary schools and we agree. We, we tend in this district not to do it right off the earliest window. But I can give you those exact dates.
Any other questions? Or comments? All right. Thanks for that. It was a lot, but, um, lot to think about. We gotta, okay. Um, let's move on to the consent agenda. Um, I need a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as modified.
Okay, thank you, John. And Charlie, your second.
No, I'd like to, uh, pull the March fifteenth, uh, public event.
March fifteenth, public?
What?
Just the public, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We all accept that amendment to my motion.
Sorry. Say that again.
I, I just say, you know, yeah, that amendment to my motion is.
Okay. Got it. So as amended again, and a second.
Second.
Is that Patty? Okay. Um, roll call vote. Starting with John.
Hi.
Thank you, Patty.
Hi.
Thank you, Charlie.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, Christine?
Hi.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hi.
Thank you, and I say aye. Uh, the consent agenda passes six zero zero. Um, all right, now we'll go to the public.
Um, page one, item one, public session, uh, third paragraph.
Yep.
Okay, superintendent, uh, should be him instead of her.
Well, I've seen.
Well spotted.
That was the only.
That was the only change I had.
Sure, easy enough.
Okay. So, uh, can I have a motion for the March fifteenth, public?
I'll move the week through the March fifteenth, publication study man.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. And second?
Second.
Thank you, John. All right, roll call vote, Lisa?
Aye.
Thank you, Charlie.
Aye.
Thank you, Christine.
Aye.
Thank you, Patty.
Hi.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
And I say aye, so that's six zero zero. Thanks. Okay. Next up.
Marcia, would it be okay if I, um, answered more clearly a question that was asked of me earlier?
Uh, sure.
Um, I got a text during this timeframe that says that the testing for the answer SASS is mid to late May.
All right. Okay, so now we're up to discussions, the reopening framework.
So, you know, we talked about these items right here. This was just more of like what it would look like going forward if we were to adopt these adjustments. Yeah, if you'd like to summarize, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, so, uh, Ruben had, uh, stated a lot of this information in the report, um, already. So I'll kind of quickly go through that. Um, originally, we had the, uh, close contact of the travel guidance, but there, the, uh, language that is put here, so starting here, um, the close contact is in the defined instance. Uh, that's, uh, pretty much word for word from, uh, you have to DPHS occupants. So the big change is going to be this paragraph, uh, the second paragraph and the first bullet point. I'm just referring to that three feet in a controlled environment. Um, and then, you know, the unconsolled still staying at six. Again, just that note about, uh, this being a change to close contact definition and not so distant thing. So we would adopt this language, um, effectively throughout the documents, um, you know, in all the different places that our definition is here, uh, travel guidance, um, you know, just kind of explaining, uh, what the DPH, what DPHS changed. And then some language in here. And again, we would, uh, just kind of reflect that language throughout the reopening framework and other associated documents. Um, and then this, uh, emergency order I typed up, uh, just a little bit. Uh, you will see a spelling, uh, code, code in instead of COVID, but everything else would be, uh, as stated here. Uh, essentially anything that's related to emergency order eighty-nine would be reflected in both the reopening framework. And then the additional factor for that would be our, uh, changes for criteria as being shown in, uh, Ruben's report. One additional change that we would have with not shown, and I can see it off the screen if you want to see it. Uh, also the definitions of red, yellow and, uh, green. Um, so if you look at, um, yeah, Ruben's report. So we, we had defined what yellow, green and, uh, red meant in this original, uh, form. And we just changed it, uh, the secondary part is kind of essentially outlining what emergency eighty-nine stands. And then, uh, just saying that, you know, green level, we would just continue on as is. Yellow, the district would take a little bit of a closer look at, um, statistics. It was kind of a little bit heavier, uh, heavier in water and that. And then that red level, uh, being the highest level of, uh, school impact would be the, Ruben would have the decision ultimately based on conversation with the various, uh, state and other factors to say, hey, we have to close for two days or no, we don't have to close based on those four one. And then obviously if you have more severe impact, we could, that is a school, you know, goes to the state for additional people. Um, so those would be the kind of three, uh, main areas of change, the emergency order eighty-nine, the close contact definition and, uh, travel guidance. The goal in this, uh, again, proposing it this way around, I'm kind of going line by line through the framework. Separates it from one is for two. Then we're able, if you guys approve this language, we can just reflect it through all documents related to these.
You know, another change that's not highlighted here, it's kind of in the background. You probably don't, probably see it anyway. And it's not a huge part of our decision making process, but the state has stopped providing us updated information in the hospitalization. So, which is important to note, but that data point, it, it doesn't seem to be important to these people anymore.
You have a question, John?
Uh, yes, you know, I think about that. Um, in reading this, uh, change here, I guess the saying comes from state order eighty-nine, but I don't understand what they mean. When they say in the controlled environment of a classroom, close contact is defined as being within three feet or a total of ten minutes or more, beginning two days prior at the illness onset. What?
So yeah, the, the only change in close contact definition, we've already had the ten minute period, we already have the key letter window. Um, and it's dealing with the two days before. The big change is just that three, that change to three feet in a controlled setting. So for example, you can classify where we are right now as closed in a controlled setting and that we're all sitting down, we're not moving a lot. We're stably, you know, distance and we're not kind of fluctuating. But if you're in like, say, a gym class or something like that, where there's a lot of movement running around, that's not the whole environment.
Nick, I understand that. I'm just trying to get at what this means, beginning two days prior to illness onset.
Oh, yeah. So, um, that's the process for contact tracing. So the New Hampshire DPHS, when we started this year off, oh, the, the state's gonna do all contact tracing. That lasts for two weeks. And we've been doing it ever since. And we do it in conjunction with them continuously today. I made a phone call. I didn't make that phone call until we got directives from them, from, you know, various scenarios that we had here, um, having a call. So, um, but what they're saying is, so what it has been, and we did the whole year since the beginning, is that the New Hampshire DPHS has had a definition of how to do contact tracing. So when we find out a positive case, we go back, find out when that person first had symptoms. All right, so it's, or, so when we go to find out that, uh, that person was symptomatic, say, uh, let's say yesterday. Yeah. We would then go two days before that to find out who this individual had been in close contact with. Close contact was defined as being in, um, within, within less than six feet of an individual for a cumulative. It started off as ten minutes, but it changed to a cumulative of ten minutes. And so now what they're saying is that they don't believe based upon their data, they need to go as strict as that, they can say it's within three feet. Yeah. So it's the same process. It just changes how close a person is by definition. So if, um, and we've been using six feet anyway, we use our thumb, but, um, it does not change our, our, how we do business within the schools. It's, it's their government. Okay, thank you.
Into, uh, Ruben's other point, uh, we brought it up on the screen. So this, uh, wider year, it's the number of de-legalizations. Uh, we've been saying not reported by any amateur, um, because they haven't been reporting that specific number. So that's a lie that was essentially just we removed in this next go around because we're not actually having any data to report there. So it's kind of, there's, there's no factor plus or negative off that particular line.
Okay. Other questions on this? Comments?
Are we both like, what is the process for, um, what is the process for voting on each of these? Will they be done as a group or individually?
Well, I, I would just do it as a group unless there is like discussion or the group feels that yes to this one, but not to this one, that kind of thing.
I definitely feel yes to some and no to others.
Okay, you wanna, or talk about that?
Is this, is this the time to?
Well, do the, let's have a curiosity for efficiency purposes. Do you want to take it? What I'm hearing is we want to do this possibly one at a time. And so if you want to, um, have a motion made for the first one, whatever that might be, and then go and discuss that one, and then go to the next one and do the same thing, or what do you think will be best? Rather than having discussion all over the place.
All over the place, yep. That's fine. So.
So I put up Ruben's slides because it kind of gets raised out, things a little bit quicker in here. And then, uh, motions are made, you can, uh, make it based on the language of the, uh, document. So this, again, this is going to be a little bit more condensed.
Okay. I just wanted to say, I'm really sorry, but for whatever reason tonight, but started off with static and now it's just, things aren't as clear as they usually are. So I'm sorry, uh, because I'm trying really hard to listen to this, but. So we're gonna go through the recommendations, but we're gonna do it from the sheet, yes? The reopening framework change sheet that you had up there?
Yes.
Okay, so let's throw that up there again.
Okay.
There we go.
Then if we need to look back at anything.
Right. So, I mean, the emergency order eighty-nine. I assume what you're looking at there, it's, you're saying rather than the waiver? Or is this just because you encapsulated that?
Yeah, so the board decision then for emergency order eighty-nine would either be to adopt it and say that we move forward, or it would be to say that the board wants to request a waiver. Those would be the two options for that one.
Okay. So, looking at the emergency order eighty-nine, what is, what do people think? Are we gonna ask for a waiver, given that we generally don't have anything that would qualify us for the waiver? Lisa?
I absolutely think that we have things that qualify for the waiver and I'm very much for asking for a waiver and continuing with the original intent to pursue coming back full five days a week on May tenth, not May third. And the reasoning for doing that would be to make sure that every faculty and staff member who wishes to be vaccinated will be fully vaccinated. And it gives us time after April vacation to get the system back where the community is, is we understand the implications of the vacation. We know historically that a school vacation time will make numbers increase. And we are, because we are in a substantial risk region currently and have been consistently for months. This is not gonna go away right now. I really strongly feel that we do qualify for a waiver, or at least should pursue it right now. And, and go back with the intention. And, and honestly, I, I just feel so frustrated that the governor, all along, right from the beginning, was saying, this is in the hands of the superintendents, do what you will. And now we have this mandate when the superintendents are using science and using the data and using best practice to make these decisions. We have a good decision on our plate to come back and spell May tenth. It is backed by all the science and all the data we have. It is supported. We need to not let ourselves be, be railroaded personally. They're railroaded by this very random decision. And come back when we feel we are ready, which I would agree, May tenth seems like it's a very reasonable time to do that.
Okay. Others? Christine?
If we do request the waiver, how long will it take to get the result, to get the answer? Do you have any idea?
I, I would imagine that it will be around, you know, a couple of days.
So would we be able to proceed with two plans at once? Basically, if, if we decided. Basically, if, if we decided to go request a waiver to open May 10th, if we voted that way, could we also plan that that might get shot down and we will still be opening April 19th?
Oh, we'd have to. Yeah, we'd have to.
Okay. Others?
Yeah, my question would be, what is the impact on parents? To the state that was due to that? In other words, if we apply for a waiver, the waiver was not granted, then we'd have to vote the five-day schedule on April 19th anyway. What would be the impact on parents? Sorry, I'll be back on what, on parents. That.
So he was asking what the impact on parents would, I don't know.
Thanks. I'm just wondering, you know, Nick. If you read the emergency order, the school board specifically says that if the world determines it's unsafe or impossible to comply, and the document that we use, that we can vary the reasons to pass. If we could have almost canceled this thing, the state has said we need to go full time starting April 19th. And so we need to consider the rationale for not going April 19th or 10th. Yet, we may end up going April 19th anyway. If the GLE doesn't accept the waiver, it doesn't translate to a waiver.
You guys can continue to have a discussion. I'm just seeing if we pull the projector back. If it's going to be a little bit of a crack every other sound diagnostic, that kind of a point. I don't know. I'm just wondering if.
John, Charlie, maybe we fall back closer to the center of where the microphones are too.
I'm, I'm just wondering if the sound of the projector, since it's centrally located, is being picked up since before reporting a hum?
Right now, Nick, you seem to be clear.
Yeah, I mean, I'm right in between the microphones right now. Is that better? Is there still a hum?
No.
Yeah.
We have the superintendent's staff, in fact, who have gotten referred.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, anyone who has a live one, that's.
Is it about asking to the public, well, not publicly, if you can, but the desire to apply?
Yeah, we're above that.
So, just a little feedback here. Ruben, when you are straightforward speaking, it's easier to hear you than when you turn to either side.
Okay.
And Patty, yours was fairly garbled.
So what Patty, I can repeat some things. So what Patty asked, Patty asked the, the rates of, yeah, about the, how many teachers had been able to get the first shot, the vaccine? So around this area, you know, we weren't like, for instance, Concord and Hopkinsian and all those. They got the one-and-done shot, so the Johnson and Johnson. Overhearing team, for the most part, has been either Moderna or Pfizer. So those are the two shots. So on the, the first Saturday that we were able to get about 100 individuals in there, the majority of people who would be in contact with kids on a regular basis got their shot. And there's probably a radius of about five days there where those other people were able to do that. The next time we had a session, we were able to get the rest of them, for the most part, except for used stragglers who just needed to do it on their own. But there's been no stuff, there's no prevention for people to get them. So it should be at this point in time, about 100% of all who wanted to get the shot done. And the other part of Patty's question was, what's the percentage? So is it the state's average, about 70% want the shot? I was saying that, though I don't have an exact percentage in front of me, it is higher than that. And so those who got their first shot on that Saturday, which is by and large the majority of teachers and associates who work with children, that would have been, they would be getting their, they would be due to get their second shot this coming Saturday.
Okay.
So we, there's, there's a motion. I have 30 seconds. I've had 30 seconds. And I'm not taking the, the spirit where we stand in this.
So for those who were having difficulty hearing, Lisa Wiley, board member, talked about the desire to have the board request a waiver. My understanding, if I were to summarize, tell me if there's anything else, would be for the rationale of the fact that people will not be fully vaccinated at that point in time, which is, which is a truth. And that the desire to do it would be on my original, what I was originally going to suggest, which was 10. And that had to do with taking into consideration that kind of 10 days after people traveled all over the place, which we haven't made a decision on that whole court even either. But that's the idea. So those two areas at least. Were there other areas?
There are one more in that our community is still at, consistently at substantial risk.
And then, yeah, and due to the fact that the community, the local community, not necessarily all of Cheshire County, but the local community of Jaffray Ridge has been continuously at substantial risk. So those, those three items would be the reasons for a possible waiver.
Right.
Charlie brought up what would be the, what, you know, what would be the impact on families or parents if we ask for a waiver, but we know that it might get turned down so that we would have to start at 19th anyway? You know, how that, all that communication would work is, and I assume along with that would be notifying jobs and getting childcare and things of that all situated. So I think that that was the other question.
Okay.
So, so is there any more to?
Discussion.
Question. I'm, I can do motion.
So what's the motion to? The motion is made by, so.
We don't have an official motion.
We don't have an official motion here, that's what I'm asking.
No, no.
Okay.
So is John making it?
Hold on a second.
So there's been no motion made, there's just discussion. And so Patty would like to say, on the other hand.
On the other hand, what, I have been a staunch proponent in people getting vaccinated and I'm delighted that we are moving ahead and people are getting so much stronger that way. But our whole intention of being four days was to cohort and to keep our kids together so that they together as a unit would be stronger. And I think five days just moves it that much farther along. And I think the teachers will, and the faculty will get their second chance. So personally, I'd say we move ahead with the 19th. I think it is a lot of change. We've endured an awful lot. I know everyone's happy and disappointed at the same time with this. But I think, I think we need to finish strong. We need to finish the year strong and together. And that's what five days will bring. Starting that.
Okay. Any other comments?
May I, just on your end?
Okay. Lisa?
Yep. My concern in this is how quickly this change would need to happen for the faculty as well. And I don't see that this would make people stronger. I think that it would strain a system that everybody is feeling, very traumatized in. And that this would not feel supported, this would not feel that this was a community gung-ho effort. This would feel a rush. If we were able to come back, have our break of April vacation, and have a month to say, on this date, we're going for it. We're going to have this, this last run and we're going to throw everything into it. People will be rested, they will feel safe, they will know that they are safe. And I just feel that we need this last, this extra two weeks. I really do, I really do.
All right. Any others?
I'm kind of leaning towards what Christine said. It's two weeks till the 19th, okay? And if we go forward with waivers and it's not two, then we have to make sure we're ready to go on the 19th. So I would say that we should request a waiver because that's the original recommendation from the superintendent, was May 10th. So we should request a waiver, but in the meantime, we need to prepare for the 19th. And we need to prepare families for the 19th. And we need to prepare a staff at the 19th. Because if we go for a waiver and it's not granted, we're going to have to be in the atmo to be ready to go, okay? And if we get the waiver, then it's fine. It gives us more time to plan and also makes sure that there's less risk to the staff. And maybe by that time, there'll be a change in the run, uh, community.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else? So if that's it for the discussion, then I guess I'm looking for a motion.
I have a motion.
Lisa?
I move that we pursue, relative to Executive Order 89, a waiver to begin in-person, five-day-a-week learning on May 10th, rather than April 19th, with the understanding that we are preparing for any eventuality and needing to go back fully on April 19th. Said that.
Okay. All right. So Lisa made a motion saying that we push it back, um, ask for a waiver, pushing it back to May 10th, but continuing to prepare for the 19th with that possibility. And John has seconded it. Um, okay. I'm going to do a roll call, vote. Um, John?
All right.
Thank you. Patty?
Nay.
Nay, you say?
Nay.
Okay. Uh, Christine?
This is, this is our one, um, nay.
Okay. Thank you. Charlie?
I say, let's give her a shot. Can't move.
Sorry. Can you give me, show me a thumb? It gave you garbled.
Yes. Yeah.
Thumbs up, okay. That's a, thank you. Lisa?
Yay.
Right. And we have an even number tonight, so. Um.
The motion is third.
Sorry?
You go.
I'm about to, and I was going to say nay. So that makes it a split.
So the motion does not carry.
So the motion doesn't carry.
So then I'll make a motion that we adopt the recommendations for the reopening framework for the first part, which is the emergency order in.
For those who did not hear that, Charlie, what happened was the motion that was made for the board to have to request a waiver on the Department of Education, while at the same time preparing for April 19th in case that waiver were not accepted. And then, and, and the part of that motion was a beginning date of the week of the 10th of May, citing the reasons discussed prior. That motion failed because we have six board members here tonight and the vote was 3-3. So Charlie Iker has now made another motion. And I, if you could repeat it, then I'll repeat it because I don't know what the motion was.
The motion was to make the changes to the reopening framework as recommended by the superintendent.
Okay, to make the, okay.
Relative to Emergency Order.
Is to accept the recommendations for the changes for Emergency Order Number 89.
Well, wait a second. Didn't Charlie say, are you referring to the recommendations in Ruben's report? It's not a paragraph, on your Emergency Order 89, or Emergency Order 89. Okay, because we've got two separate documents, sort of, we've got the recommendations and then. Or are they consistent? I mean, are they consistent, Ruben?
Yeah, they're consistent. I mean, the only other thing that the, my report had was a matrix that discussed this right here.
But you said that you're not recommending we go to three feet, Christine, that, right?
We, we are not permitted to. One, we don't need to. Two, I think that the six feet, we followed that because we believed strongly. That was important at the beginning of this. And three, because our MOA was written with an agreement to keep it six feet. There's nothing in the Emergency Order Number 89 that attempts to trump that in a sense. So it, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be asking to trump, you know, get rid of that anyway. But there's nothing in the order that would suggest that we would be allowed to do that.
My understanding is we're dealing with just the Emergency Order 89 piece of it. But the close contact piece, the other piece will be covered separately. That's correct?
Yes, so all motions have stated so far.
So Charlie's made a motion, right? To accept the superintendent's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Is there someone who will second that?
I second it.
Thank you, Christine. All right. So roll call, vote? John?
No.
Patty?
Aye.
Thank you. Christine?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Lisa?
No.
All right. And I say aye. So that passes for two. So next we go to the close contact?
Again, this is part of the purpose of contact tracing. The individuals who would utilize this would be our school nurses in conjunction with DPHS. I get involved quite often. I rarely know the individuals' names or their circumstances, but that's, that's, you know, I have to know something in order to make communication happen.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we make the framework reopening changes to the reopening framework. Changes to reopening framework regarding close contact.
Alright, thank you Charlie. I need a second. Patty, was that you? Okay, thank you. Roll call, vote? John?
Well, can I just ask for clarification on this before we vote? So, um, I, I understand thanks to your explanation, Louvin, the I, I think, I understand at least the definition of close contact, but we still have your recommendation regarding the maintaining the 6 feet as I was saying.
But we, we have to. We have no choice but to, even if I wanted to go another direction. Which I don't want to.
And this, I, you know, I have a concern that the governor could override you on that.
He ain't. Well, it would be, it would be your choice. It would be weird for him to force us to do less than six. He hasn't put that into his executive order. So he, there's nothing in there that would that we could even lean on to utilize in order to do that. And the legally binding agreement that we've developed with the associations, which both parties have zero issue agreeing to, of 6 feet needs to be avoided by.
Okay, good. Thank you. And, and so we're still, we're still on the process of voting, and I'll say aye.
Okay, so, sorry. You said aye?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. At Patty?
Aye.
Thank you. Christine?
Hi.
Thank you. Charlie?
Hi.
Sorry Charlie, I, I still didn't understand.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Alright, Lisa?
Aye.
Thank you. And I say aye, that passes 6-0-0. Travel guidance? I need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the guidance to that the governor has stipulated to open it up starting after April vacation. So, or, including April vacation beyond, I think was your recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the basic, vacation will be fine because he won't be back until the following Monday anyway, so that's cut, the intent was the following Monday, but.
Could we just do effective immediately?
You can do it effective immediately as well.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we update our travel guidance to to what the, we have your recommendations have been effectively immediately.
Okay.
Well said.
And we got a second?
I have a second.
Okay, thank you Charlie. John?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, from my perspective, at least staying after April vacation you know, gives us two weeks for most of our teachers to actually vaccinate themselves. Just like, like that, I think.
Okay, so John, you're suggesting that we have it start not immediately, but April vacation?
No, I'm not even gonna change the motion. I mean, the motion is.
Well, it's, it's April vacation.
You're okay. Well, we have, we have a motion on table, so we gotta, we gotta complete the voting of the motion that's
that's in place. So the, the motion is to change it effectively. We've got a yes, a yes, and other people need to vote.
I didn't think we had any yeses on that yet. I thought we were still doing the second.
Oh, was, were you a second with the motion?
Yeah. Yeah, we can modify, so we haven't done any votes.
We're in the discussion. My mistake. So we have a motion on table, and we're in the discussion period. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, so then I'll, I'll make a motion to amend the motion to use a, the majority of the motion, the only one that can stand.
I will make a motion to amend my previous to the beginning of April vacation. Making it effective beginning of April vacation.
Okay. Thank you Lisa. Do we have a second for that amendment?
I'll second.
Thank you for the second. And is there any more discussion?
This comment goes against roll call. Can you not comment on any of this stuff or question it?
Sorry.
Do you hear that Marcia?
No.
Okay. A question from the public that is in session right in here. She just asked because you're the one who needs to respond. The question was, can a person from the community respond to this or make a comment on this?
Right. I will take community comment, sure.
So, Marz, the board chair has just opened it up for community comment. And so that follows to the rules.
I guess just for the folks in the audience, since we are having audio issues tonight, we're actually picking up all audio by the two reps, like the phone's hanging to the wall, which you should be able to see. If you guys want to make your comments, it has been open. If you could just take a couple steps forward to about where that projector is, just like it's better to be picked up by the audio equipment, the folks attending the meeting here. So again, if you could just say first name, last name, current resident, and then you can make your comment.
Okay, my name is Stacy Sepala and I'm range. I'm just kind of questioning what the benefit would be. We've got, we've got sports in session, and that travel ban not being lifted eliminates pretty much the whole league right now. Waiting until after April vacation. I'm just wondering, because there have been coaches that have come back and are not in, or they're inside of the 10-day or it's the quarantine. And so now literally we're hoping to revamp everything if you guys say after vacation. So I'm just wondering, is it really gonna make that much of a difference if they go at April vacation versus now, which would kind of make things a lot easier for everybody in the whole sport, which they've been dying to get back to. They, they have all the other roll calls, but why can't we just lift it now? That's just my question. I don't know how much a couple weeks is gonna make a difference for the quarantine.
Thank you.
Alright, does anybody else from in person have a comment?
Not anymore.
Okay. Alright, so just for everybody virtually attending, we do have a couple folks here in person. We just gave them an opportunity to make some comments, because that was where the opportunity kind of came up. So I'm now just, just here, if you may raise hands in order to provide your public comment. Yeah, specifically to this item on travel guidance.
Yes.
There, there is a second public comment section for the end of the meeting with people that make comments on other related items or other items on the agenda. So we do have Tammy's?
Yes, hi, thanks. Tammy Cummings, Jaffrey, New Hampshire. I just have a couple questions. My first is, what is the number of staff members to have tested positive in our district that can be linked to working at school?
We have, we have no data that says that any learner or adult has had transmission here at school.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is about the deep cleaning day. I was just wondering, normally you deep clean on Wednesdays when the kids are not in school. Do you have a plan? I'm thinking that maybe if we heard a plan for when the deep cleaning would occur, it might put people at ease that going five days a week will be fine.
Yes, I've had the conversation with the facilities manager and the ability to increase number of times the disinfecting goes on. That is very doable. So we just, and then we would do that to the maximum that we possibly could. And it would be increased beyond what we do now.
Okay, excellent. Thanks so much for taking my question.
Thank you Tammy. Any other hands?
I would refer to school-wide disinfecting.
Nick, any others there?
We've got another one from Matthew Somerow.
Matthew seems to be muted. Is that his doing or ours?
Yeah, so he, Matthew, you have the ability to unmute right now, just like to make your comment. Yeah, he had just raised his hand before he started speaking, Marcia, and I don't have the ability to actually turn somebody off of you. I don't have the ability to ask them. So Matthew, one more time, if you could, if you wanna make a, a public comment, you just have to unmute yourself and, uh, first thing, last thing, cover the. He has, it seems like he's actually dropped off of Zoom, so I don't know if he was maybe having some technical issues.
Okay. Alright, then, um, if there's, are there any other hands?
No, I'm not seeing any.
Okay.
I'm, I'm still not seeing his back on the, in the, in the.
Okay. Alright, um, so we've had a motion, we've had an amendment, we've had discussion. Just, are we continuing with the amended motion?
So the motion on the table right now is, you have that man?
Yeah, so as currently, um, our motion is adopting the travel guidance language, and it was said before April, uh, before April vacation. People have either the weekend heading in or something that affects that, correct Lisa?
Yes.
Well, Heather. Does impact, uh, like.
And you're a half? Well, we're not traveling outside of New Hampshire.
So, for, for those who need to hear, Charlie Iker asked Heather Lindstad, activities director, who is here in person, if the amendment to that situation would impact our school athletics.
I think it would, it would count on the inside.
And, and Heather's replied to him that it wouldn't because we travel within New Hampshire.
Right.
That is to not be confused with the public statement that was made earlier about community sports teams and their ability to travel.
Right.
They have to follow COVID guidelines.
Oh, they do?
Yes, they do.
Alright. I see.
So just a point of clarification, are the little league teams or other issues with the travel outside of New England?
No, the, the, um, they have to follow COVID guidelines, so if you do not drop the, the quarantine or the travel quarantine, then they have to revamp because there are a couple of coaches which are going to be inside of, or still inside of that quarantine, because there's a couple of them that come back, and some players. And so it complicates the whole league.
Beautiful. The only reason why I'm asking is because currently, and, and anybody just see, I'm just trying to make this clarification. Maybe it's a issue maybe that, um, currently our framework allows for travel within New England. So there may be any trouble outside of New England.
There are a couple of coaches that were outside of New England now.
And do we also have the piece about a negative COVID test? Is that in there?
Yeah, if anyone has had their second COVID test, or if you're Johnson and Johnson, single shot, and you are two weeks, oh, it's different for the different ones, but I think it's like two weeks following hours, what we're concerned with, two weeks following, then you're considered fully vaccinated and the travel guidelines already do not apply.
Right.
Matter of fact, quarantining in general, the same way does not apply.
Right.
I think, um, if I could, if I could say something, I, what I, what's going around in my head right now is the adjustment to the 19th by our faculty and staff. And then, um, I do know the personalized learning plan for any student that's been, is quarantining adds another layer of complexity to the teacher's load. And so that's factoring into my head that if they didn't have to think about that on top of everything else going on in that two weeks, that would be better. That coupled with the lack of transmission between students and the faculty and the faculty and students. So I'm inclined to lift it, and the fact that it would be incongruent with the governor's orders already, I guess it's that hard, you know, if there's no, if there's no quarantine anywhere, then what, how can we, how can we justify there being one? But I, I, I mean, I understand the safety aspect of it, but there's a part of me that just, this is getting because we're so close. So we gotta get through this.
So, to, did, did, was that all understood, Marcia?
Recap, I was gonna say, so for a recap.
For a recap, Patty had mentioned that the other side of things to think about, any reason to lift it now would be because as students or learners are on quarantine, for the purposes of traveling, let's say, maybe they go away on a weekend, or someone went left, you know, over April Easter, or April, and that, as an example, that they then have, teachers are responsible, or at least partially responsible for their, like, certain types of plans with those students and monitoring those plans while they're out. And so her thought was that this would lessen the burden on staff. She coupled that statement with the lack of transmission within the learning environment amongst everyone.
Patty, you wanna recontinue your motion again? Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. So as, as I understand it, it doesn't make sense to throw up our hands and say, okay, we're all done. We have lots of knowledge that this particular area has high transmission. It, not, not only in the state, but in the county, but on top of that, we're seeing spikes all across the country. Like 15 or 16 states, that's the number of the spikes. We've got news that there are variants, different forms of the virus. We've got news that there are variants, different forms of the virus that are more transmissible and that it's a danger of them creating problems. So, yeah, we're almost finished, we hope. We don't know that, and our medical professionals are telling us that we don't know that and that they're scared that we don't get lazy. I guess so. So I would say the opposite of what Patty said. That in addition to telling our teachers that we're gonna tell you to come back to five days on April 19th because the governor said, the governor who's been absent from this whole discussion for most of the past year. But in addition to that, we're gonna say, and by the way, we're not in quarantine, we're not gonna wait till the 19th. So to me, I think that would actually make it worse for our teachers because it would be them hearing on the national news that this is still a problem. We're almost finished, we hope, but be careful because there's spikes all around. And from the school district, they'll be hearing, nah, we're finished with the quarantine and the government said that's enough. I don't see that as being particularly, I don't see that as helping our staff feel more comfortable. That's the opposite point of mine.
All right, Lisa?
I do not wish to amend the current motion.
All right. You want to amend it?
No, she says she does not wish to amend the current motion. The current motion that she made, you already done.
So are we back to the original?
The, the motion for stopping the quarantine of travel at the April break. That's what the motion is.
That's what the motion is?
Yeah.
Not effective immediately, but April break?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the motion that's on the table and it looks like discussion has stopped.
I think.
To the audience, John McMurphy had a different view than what Patty had.
Yeah, yeah, I heard those. Okay. Okay. So Christine?
When I, when I'm thinking about this and the travel restrictions, and of course I want to support the teachers in every way possible and support our, our students, but it's such a nebulous guideline because Massachusetts is spiking, you know? So we say to people, if you go to Illinois, which may not have a spike, you have to quarantine, but if you go to Massachusetts, you don't have to quarantine. And that's really what's, what's making it very difficult for me to make this decision is it's so random at this whole point where some places are spiking and some places are not spiking. And that's really, I don't know how best to support the teachers and the students and the families and the communities in this way when wherever you go, you might hit a spike. So do we have people quarantining? Or do we just give up? And say, well, everybody's been in school four days a week anyway. Most of the teachers have gotten a, a shot. So there's some level of protection.
Okay. Any other? All right, so I don't see any other discussion. So I think we're going to vote on the motion to have this in place until the April vacation. If I have this correct.
Can we change on this instead of just kind of generically referring to the regulation? I feel like some people are talking about this being before, some are talking after. If they go before, is that referred to Monday, the weekend?
Okay, so what would the date be?
The 24th is a Saturday prior to April break.
Okay. So is that what we're going with?
Yes.
Okay.
Jamaica says yes.
All right, so then the motion is to continue with the quarantine until April 24th?
Yes, essentially, yes.
And then we adopt the new version?
And then you would, you would drop the, yeah, at which time you would drop the quarantine travel guidance.
Well, right, New England has changed the, the, the network from New England to the United States.
Okay. All right. Let's do a vote. John?
Aye.
Thank you, John. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you, Patty. Christine?
Aye.
Thank you, Christine. Charlie?
Aye.
Thank you, Charlie. Lisa?
Aye.
Thank you, Lisa. I was going with aye and we have a split vote again, so it does not carry.
All right, so we need another motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we change the travel guidance to reflect that there, we let the quarantine.
The new motion that is made by Patty is to let the quarantine guidance for New England effective immediately.
Okay. Is there a second? Christine? Thank you. Okay. Then let's do a vote. John?
Aye.
Thank you, John. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you, Patty. Christine?
Aye.
Thank you, Christine. Charlie?
Aye.
Thank you, Charlie. Lisa?
Aye.
Thank you, Lisa. I say aye as well. It carries 5, 1, and no one abstaining. All right. That was a bit of work.
All right, so we do have Heather Lindstad, our activities director, in attendance physically here at the meeting. I don't know how we want to do this. If one wants to hear, you put a presentation or you go to highlighting or have an opportunity for questions.
Maybe a couple of highlights and then see if there's questions, hey?
Heather, do you want to just start off by testing if you can hear? I can hear you from there.
Can you hear me?
Pretty good.
Good. Now, hand right here.
You want standard?
Yeah. So pretty much the spring, obviously, is new for us again since we didn't have a spring season last year. Most of the things that we adopted, put in are things that we've looked at from the fall for the winter. And what we think are the best practices for our coaches, our student athletes for the spring. And same with, obviously, the guidelines that we've been following that have worked for the district within the school system. So there, we highlighted different sports, I can go over that, but the main thing is, again, masks will be worn at any time that the student athlete, the coach, fan, anybody around and outside, if they can't maintain 6 feet social distancing, they will have a mask. When they are practicing, then they will have their mask up with them at all times. But like in the fall, when the coach gives them the opportunity to play and compete for their safety, we will not have them wearing masks. However, if like for baseball, softball, again, they can't maintain 6 feet when they're in a dugout, they're bound to have their mask on. Baseball, softball, as we go into that, we're gonna expect a catcher to wear a mask, we're gonna expect the umpire to wear a mask, and we're gonna expect if we're up to bat, we have our mask with us so that if we get a hit and we're on base, we're gonna wear our mask while running. We don't think that's going to even speed or hurt you. For our fielders and everybody else, they would be wearing a mask. Now, within the NHIA, there's different coverings. This is gonna be the primary, would be a mask, but the NHIA also allows for gators or a different type. And again, we talked about it in the playoff, the NHIA will probably mandate again that they wear masks, who we talked to coaches and who's student athletes, that they've got to come up with something that they're comfortable wearing. So if you're out in front of field and it's, it's a gator and they've got to get used to that because they're gonna have to wear sunglasses so that they don't look up under the sun, fog their glasses and those kinds of things. So when we're talking about the safety team, we know they're socially distanced out there, we don't think that they have to wear masks, but they are gonna have to practice and find something that works for them. If they're gonna have success in the playoffs, that it's in the playoffs, it is mandated, then that's going to be where it is. Similar to doing track and field, we feel like we're gonna space out the, the tracks, every other lane or track meet because it's gonna be in the heat and those kinds of things and the use of masks. We're going to do half-meets, so there'll only be nine events on a, on a Wednesday. Then the next Wednesday, they will do the other nine events. One of the other things that we want to look at, and we don't know anything, but as you all know probably, or if you look at any reports, unfortunately, young people seem to get dehydrated faster and that's the other reason we have to watch for them. They have to have their mask with them to start front time race, but we also have to, we have to for water, making sure that they have their own water bottles, finding out how else we can get electrolytes or deodorant into their systems and making sure. So this is going to be hard because everything we're basing it on for winter, we haven't had, and I know I did everything for the, the fall, we never had a really, really tough day. So I think that's gonna be one of those things that we have to go look at. But when we say that they're not going to be wearing masks and they're out in the field, rather safe is concerned. You can't let a mask impede them from seeing the ball. You don't want anybody hitting the ball to the face, especially starters and those kinds of things. So that's why, again, we will stress for student athletes that masks have to be with them. If they're primary covering, especially when they can't social distance 6 feet, but they will have a second backup that makes them comfortable and what they have to practice with when they're out in the field so that when it comes playoff time, that they can do that, if they need to play a really physical opponent. If they need to play dugout or, or what people call gators. I think that kind of highlights. Tennis, again, those guys, same thing. When they're playing singles, they wouldn't be wearing them. If they're waiting to, to play, practice, standing, something, they can't social distance. And of course, they're gonna have their mask on too, with the same, one thing.
Another thing that's important to point out in this document that's been, that's been used here is the drama performance.
The drama performance, yes, I'm happy for that. Again, they will do their tech night. We're gonna stay with the same team, first of all, and make sure that everything is taken care of by 8 o'clock. Just like what we do with basketball and the track. In spinware, we will mark out the heating in the track, even though they can use the floor of the track trap or basketball in the bleachers, but we're going to do that. And for the same, sign up, parents, two parents being able to come in and separate them, gift them a flag for any kind of. So we're feeling that a little bit, same from what we did with, with, with in the track. But our activities, again, and anything in the building, maintaining the same thing where everything is done by 8 and all activities that are inside, all the stands are still 6 feet and with masks. Anytime in the building, you're going with a mask. Same thing for baseball, softball, or anybody that uses the pass. For indoor, if it's raining, they'll have to be wearing a mask. Anything inside.
All right.
I won't go with spreadators, but if, last, the spreadators, we're gonna use the same. Velocity that we use with the fall, spreadators, if you're in bleachers, will be, because really you can't predict social distancing. So everything in the bleachers, you wear a mask, anything around the fence. If you're, if you're cohort, family, staying 6 feet, you don't have to wear a mask. We are going, not invite, we're not inviting visiting teams because that allows our fans, our parents, families, and keeps it within us. Our parents, families, get more people, finds you're there, socially distancing, you're using the space. We get more of that and we don't want to try to run around and figure out who's not within a cohort, being generally rent and by associated with the school, instead of trying to find out where the visiting fans are. Where the visiting fans have them. They will be invited heavily if they want to video it for their team, if they have a team manager and whatnot, but they won't be invited to. Our community can support our team members.
Okay, is that the last one?
Yeah, I think that's the most, those are the key points that I think people would ask about here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there questions about any of this for Heather? Charlie?
Yeah, could you say a little bit about training and coaching? Because it sounds to me like baseball in particular is much more complex for the athlete than other sports where they use a wore mask or a hidden one.
Right, so again, if the coach wants to put in more restrictive thing for his team, he or she, fan, but we work with the coaches as far as what guidelines would be based on the teams that we are playing, with our bus driver, the teams that, again, we're staying within fifty area, right? We're going with the same kind of schools that we played in soccer and, I'm sorry, ball and soccer. So that our bus travel is limited to, to a stadium and that. And again, we're talking to student athletes, we're talking to coaches, the same as in these kind of guidelines. If they want to be more restrictive because going into the playoff, they feel that the kids aren't practicing enough with their mask, and that's what they're going to have to do. But we're also gonna try to, we're going to go make sure they're watching about hydration, sun, right? They're breathing and everything.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, then we need to accept this. So, motion?
I make a motion that we accept the 21st spring vote.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Second, was that Patty? All right, we have a second. I'll do a roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Thank you. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you. Christine?
Aye.
Thank you. Charlie? Thank you. Pat, Lisa?
Aye.
Thank you. I say aye. Pass is 600. Good luck.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay, so next up, we're on to the school district calendar.
So this calendar, um, has gone through a couple of iterations, um, both at the SAU, more, more than both. So we've had the JREA in particular looking over, um, getting back to us any changes. There were some minor changes in the early part of this calendar, um, based upon the unencumbered classroom prep day, they wanted a specific day, so that was changed from the original um, item. This was brought to the uh, meeting with the scenic and convo. Reason why we do that is because we share the CTE programming with them. And so this calendar aligns well, not perfectly, with both of those schools. Um, administrations looked at it, the uh, that's like I said, the SAU, actually, we have the, I think, changed one thing in July, or like one of those dates that was a recent change, but it doesn't affect the school year employees. Um, so all those things have changed. You can see when the proposed graduation date would be on the seventeenth, given a start in August. And then, of course, we go by, um, you know, a hundred seventy seven days, we have snow days and things of that nature, which I'm sure we'll have more conversation about how we handle that, if we're to come. Um, that's where all that makeup time is, and that, that pinkish um, color for the end of June would be. It's very similar, very similar to what was originally proposed for this year. Obviously, this year's calendar got adjusted somewhat due to the pandemic situation.
Yeah. Okay, questions?
Um, could you explain the timing of the June, the third in June? Um, is it that, you know, in the past, there were less days for student, or, you know, like, is there more days for workshops and teachers, uh, professional development? Is there a population of folks who feel that it's farther out in June than it used to be? And I don't, I was, I have been paying close enough attention in the last ten years to know what it used to be. Do you know what it used to be? And why is the third week in June now?
Uh, I mean, we've had several years worth of, or, or, at in the third week, we've had a, one time we went, well, you know, longer than that. I think this year, our original proposal was earlier. Um, we were able to get that done earlier. We don't have any more days, uh, for professional development than we have before. That's a bargained item. Uh, I will say that what is often a change is what the vacation looks like around the December timeframe. That one has the most flexibility. Sometimes you're taking two full weeks off, sometimes you're taking a week and a half. Uh, so how that winter break goes can, can play with the end of the year.
Um, but maybe is it that seniors finish sooner than the cohort, the other grade? I, I, I've just
In the past?
Yeah.
Uh, my first two years here, I believe the, and I'm sure every year prior to that, at least for quite some time, um, the seniors' graduation date was one week prior to the proposed last day of school. Um, there were a lot of discussion here at the board level about that. The, Charlie, you'd have to correct me if I'm wrong, but if I got it right, you don't have to worry about it. Um, but it would go, the discussion went that, um, well, there were two, two pieces. One was that if we had a lot of snow days, then we didn't have a lock-in date, so it was flexible with move with those snow days as you added days on, um, because there is a state law, so you can't graduate, you know, more than five days prior to the last day of school for everyone else. So that needed to change. To avoid that, that was one reason, it was not by any means the main reason. The main reason for changing it to the last day of school had more to do with the expectations for the seniors. They were already, what was happening was they had, they, they had a week prior to getting out, and then what was going on for the week's events was very non-academic, they had two weeks in a sem prior to. And so that was the reasoning for the, for his decision to shift it to the last day of the school day, school year. And if we went further into the year, up a week, it would just remain. So there was a solid date that wouldn't need to be changed. That was the benefit of that. Because people are always asking, is it, when's, when's it going to be this year? This day or this day? And so we always have to come back and say, it's going to be this day. That's the history. Like, miss anything?
What? Backer?
Yep.
John?
Well, looking at this, um, that last week, it said, um, potential makeup days?
Yes.
So does that mean that the actual last day of school would be one of those days, but it's not determined?
So the proposed last day of school for, for our learners is the sixteenth. Okay?
Okay.
And so we tend to throw in a five, we always throw in five extra days to, um, just make people aware that if we have snow days for instance, we would be making an outbreak at that point in time. So that's what voting this is, saying, hey, on these days, we might, we might, don't plan your vacation, we might be in school still, it's a possibility. Um, so the seventeenth, so you see the twenty-fourth there, that's in red, that says the unencumbered class prep, so that's the negotiated day. So that day, if we're not the twenty-fourth, if like, for instance, every, we have no snow days, students' last day would be the sixteenth. The unencumbered last day for class prep and all that kind of stuff for teachers would be on the seventeenth. It's the day that immediately follows the last day of the school year.
Thank you for the, uh,
Yeah. The, um, of course, there's a bigger conversation within that, I don't think we should have it now, I would propose not having it now, um, about remote days, snow days, doing things that we've done this year, and whether there's any interest in continuing any of that or not. There are views on that, I'm sure.
And we are our practice.
We're, we, we probably should have a conversation as a board to choose and finalize the last day of school. Are there days that we could make up? Uh, there certainly are. Um, this has been a different year. Um, so have we, our school district has done a great job with getting, because we go by hours, that's how we do it, even though we also have days, our contracts are written for days in our process as hours, we will have no problem meeting the hours requirements of the school year. But we can bring it up next time and finalize that. It's a fairly easy conversation now. But it wouldn't change the graduation day. The graduation day is the graduation day.
Okay, so at the calendar that's before us, are there any other questions? Or are we ready to take a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second you.
Okay. And I'll do roll call vote then. John?
Well, what was the motion for the second count? What was the second count? All right.
Thank you. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you. Christine?
Aye.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you. Lisa?
Aye.
Thank you. And I say aye. Calendar's adopted six zero zero.
I appreciate the color and formatting, it makes it much more accessible and much easier to read.
Yeah. All right.
Give you that.
Policy. So, policy, folks, you've been really busy. It appears.
So these are all per first reading, I'll, I don't think, uh, Lisa's not here, so it's okay if it's beat for the policy committee.
Thank you.
Um, so these are all per first reading, uh, the indoor air quality program, the indoor air quality. Um, those are important ones for our, our visit from the state, so we certainly read those over. Uh, we would want those passed by the next time that we are meeting. Uh, we'd like all of these passed for that matter, but at that time, but the rest of them, um, it was, it was a huge, basically, we had this huge policy, and the policy committee said, we'd like it all broken up into separate policies. And so Kerry's been spending quite a bit of time going through to other schools, seeing how they put their policies together, and then making sure that they're all separated. It all has to do with um, budgeting, with spending, is, is the rules and regulations of how we do business that way. Um, administration of federal grants, so some of the work that we did tonight. Uh, so take a look at those, uh, that's the, uh, they don't, the first ones anyway, don't, uh, go too far astray from the New Hampshire School Board Association suggested policies. Uh, there were a couple districts that we looked at, I believe Kearsars, and also, I always look at West River for, um, structure. And there might have been one other that we looked at, just to kind of see how they worded and phrased a few of the items, uh, to make it a little bit crisper than what NHFBA had put in place.
Okay.
No action.
Thanks. No, no action needed. Thanks for the recap. That helps. All right, um, board committee updates, uh, organization.
This is just the document that was sent out to everybody.
Right, so, um, there, I've gotten a couple of emails from, uh, board members. Uh, and I apologize, John, I, I never got your input. I don't know how that happened, but it didn't happen. Um, so I had just kept you on committees that you had been on, but you said you would prefer not to be on goals. Um, and then also, Charlie, you said that you would be willing to swap, so I think Charlie and I are going to swap. Charlie's leaving board goals, I'm going to leave facilities, I'll go to board goals, Charlie to facilities. Um, and then John, you said you wanted off-board goals, but guess what? We realized, we forgot to put on, um, a, a committee that needs a board member, and maybe you'd be willing to do it. It's the, uh, the construction trades, uh, program advisory committee?
The PAC.
The PAC? So John, if I take you off board goals, will you go on that?
Sure.
All right, yay!
The PAC had its first meeting, I think, last week, uh, for the year, it was a good meeting. Uh, and it's a good time to get on, lots of big shifts.
Yeah, good stuff going on.
Yes, that's been discussed.
All right.
Well, when does that committee meet?
Minimum of two times a year. I suspect that what will happen is it will be quarterly in the future. The makeup of that committee is largely actually community members. Um, who are, who work in the field, or fields of, uh, the construction trade. There's, uh, the principals on there of the, of the high school. Uh, I go often, and the teach, you know, teacher, of course, would be on there as well.
All right.
Can I make a quick point to this real quick? All right, so, um, just for all the board committees, um, specifically board goals, education, finance, policy, and facilities, if you guys could have some sort of organizational meeting that determines your chair, your vice chair, and if there's a secretary, and if we can make an effort to communicate to me whatever your new normal meeting schedule will be. Um, I feel like we had an effort to organize our committees, and COVID's kind of seemed to derail a lot of that, which people kind of re-prioritizing. I felt it gets to this point where we're back to generating regular agendas, minutes, um, so on and so forth. So I'll probably send out an email to everybody just providing, going to the more specifics, because it'd be my call of, uh, the need for some of those items.
Great. Thanks, Nick.
So, uh, one other question, besides the rated committee, and Christine, you can change your mind on this, but I asked Christine earlier if she would be interested in, uh, student manifest signing. I've done it for a couple of years, and I, I don't mind it, but it is a good way to get a feel for where, where does money go, what is, what is it we're spending our money on, and feel more in touch with that.
I said I would do it.
All right, so, hmm. So I, I need to find something else for John to do.
You could hook me on wellness, unless you have only one board position on there.
We, on wellness, we take you all.
Yeah, I think, I think wellness, I think wellness is going to become a bigger, bigger of them.
I, I did discuss wellness with Heidi, and, you know, we had a sort of like
Okay. That sounds great.
However, there is another, um, committee I wanted at least to ask about, maybe it's no longer uh, needed, but a, a safety committee. We, we did have a safety committee prior to hiring a safety coordinator. And the reason I ask, and in looking at the document we handed out, or actually, that you handed out, I guess, a couple of months ago, I, I you know, it seemed like he was covering a lot of important items, but not necessarily, you know, there was overlap between that and what the safety committee had taught us about, but not completely overlap. So.
Yeah, so that is in the, uh, plans for re, kind of reinvigorating that. Um, so the idea would be leaving that on our regular, or whoever's in that position, uh, leaving that on a quarterly basis. So that would be that community safety committee. There's another committee that we're, it's not, neither of these are board committees, but, um, there's another committee that we're, uh, going to be looking for, and it's kind of an offshoot of the facilities committee, which is that building committee, as we look at what Turner does to offer us and see if there's anything we want to do that's actionable, which means we're going to have to get people in the community involved in that. So here, the, the safety committee has not been developed or redeveloped. Um, yeah, I had started that, and had met and so forth, we got this position. That position is now getting up and running. Uh, we have some broad goals for the next several years, those will be shared out in more detail. There's still a little bit of action that needs to take place with the administration of the schools to weigh into that, uh, as it involves them. Um, but that, that has to get up and running for the beginning of next year and go, and be quarterly. So there'll be opportunities to get on that.
Yeah, just a point of, uh, clarification. So this isn't necessarily a comprehensive list of like every committee the district has or will have. Um, if you look at it, there's kind of two different types of committees. There's board committees, and then there's administrative committees. Uh, so like board goals, education, finance, policy, and facilities are our board, uh, committees, meaning that they're board-led, primarily made up of board members. Uh, like communication and wellness, those are more of a, uh, an administrative community, and are made up of maybe a larger audience of more people of varying viewpoints. So like, for example, communication, my, I have parents, I have staff members and things like that on my committee, it's similar to wellness, where it's, it's a a wider group of people. Um, essentially what it boils down to, there's some different RSA languages associated with each of the types of committees, so even like types of committees, so, even like the PAC committee that you're on right now, that's not a board committee, it's more a, just committee opportunity, so, as those other things like safety and things come up, I'm sure we'll talk about that, and have opportunities for interested board members to join, the big kind of rule is just that idea of not having more than three board members actively serve on a committee, because then it effectively becomes a full, a school board meeting, so.
Thanks. Okay, um, communications, do we have a quick update?
Yeah, so we have a, I guess, can everybody hear me pretty well?
Yeah.
Okay, we have now an hour and a half meeting, a couple weeks ago, and we discussed a bunch of things, so I'll just kind of try to pick up some stuff, and people want to question that, we can go, so first off, I know everybody kind of spoke about this issue with audio and some other things, I know that when we're having board meetings, people talk, everybody sees me in that little window, that's because we're currently in the music rooms, and we're running all of our audio off to microphones in the ceiling. Through some of this grant money that we've been awarded as a, from the state, we've actually been able to purchase a bunch of streaming equipment, so this originally was kind of being looked at as a solution to things like basketball games, and school board meetings, what can we do to help, what we ended up doing was we consulted with the company, the same company, MP Productions, that installed the sound system in the craft, and we kind of looked more district-wide at what we could do, so rather than just purchasing equipment for the school board meetings, or just for basketball games, we actually purchased a bunch of equipment, various cameras, it's all centered around these streaming racks, so I'm running everything directly out of the laptop right now, this is actually gonna be an additional box that'll allow me to plug, instead of like this little box, I can plug various cameras, I can plug microphones into that, it's gonna give us a more comprehensive kind of spectrum for a lot of these events, for example, every board table is actually gonna have this little microphone now, instead of everybody being picked up off of two, you're gonna have multiple cameras, where we can actually focus on board members, instead of everybody else at computers open, so we actually, I talked to Alex, to be, he's received everything but the school board microphones, so he's actually hoping to drop that off at some point soon, and I can start messing around with it, the goal is to immediately start with school board meetings, and to help with things like the drama production, that's something that's supposed to livestream, potentially down the line, you can take on live streaming our own graduation, instead of hiring a company to come and do that, on their application for broadcast clubs and other things, so it's gonna be coming student, staff, and district-wide kind of efforts, and just improve a lot of that, whether it's a microphone, streaming equipment, et cetera, and install some cameras, I've actually, one camera in the craft, one in the harness gym, that actually has the joystick controllers, and follow along with sports action, the event for basketball games, the previous, you can just start a webcam off the stage, so a lot of really good stuff there, and hopefully, if everything goes according to plan, it sounds like the microphones are kind of on their way, I guess companies who order them from have an inventory event, so hopefully that'll be here, maybe this week, and maybe we can go live as soon as next board meeting, probably be a bit healthier, then again, lots of student-centered focus going on after that. Website update, we have officially sent all of our, well, 95% of our information off to the company, we've been given a rough kind of quote, but hopefully sometime in the spring we'll have that all up and running, right now I'm currently working on to get all the final pieces of information, they're actually currently building out our website from the backend. We're also currently working on building the custom mobile app, which will be able to bring in like news and other events, a specific app that will be branded like Jaffa or the school district, and there's also a third app that we're working to go live, which helps specifically with notifications, speaking of notifications and things like that in general, there's a lot of work going on in the SAVU offices, specific to how we communicate both internally and externally, you guys heard, I believe it was last meeting or the meeting before, an update from Leanne and Colleen, who talked to us in the business office, things that are gonna be improving some efficiency, Leslie McLean, Ruben's assistant, is actually going through and looking at a comprehensive view of a lot of different things, we're hoping to actually put more emphasis on online registration, so parents will be able to hopefully, as soon as this next school year, be able to enroll their students online, and actually be able to make their own changes to things like contact information, things like that in the system, so instead of having a parent reaching out to us and saying, I didn't get the robocall, I didn't get whatever, we have to track down where the information might not be right, and then have to update the form, parents will actually have login accounts, and, you know, other folks will have login accounts, where they can update that information, we can also make things like texting, and things like backdoor labs, so those are new additional ways to reach out to folks. Also looking at streamlined processes with other programs, essentially what we're trying to do is identify needs, we took a big comprehensive look at all of our platforms, we've gotten rid of some things, we're trying to consolidate and streamline, look at what's the hub for student data, what's the hub for staff data, and then just try to route all the systems together, so they speak nicely and actually flow information. Working on, looking at the communication plans, when I was hired about two years ago, I was, my first school board meeting was actually the meeting that we approved the communication plan, that plan was for about two years of action steps, we're about half that two-year period, so, I haven't sent out an email yet, but we're hoping to reconvene the communications committee this month, to actually get an update to somewhere we're at, with the goal of over the summer, developing new goals to move forward, there's also a hope that, looking into some of these IT things that we're going, that we're going through right now, the tech update that's kind of at the bottom of our agenda every night, looking at creating more policies, and actually creating more of like a communication handbook or guidebook, to make sure that things are reflecting properly, how we need to communicate, so on and so forth, obviously, I can go into a lot more depth on a lot of things, but that's kind of the, that's quick advice to me here.
All right, thanks very much, any questions for Nick on communications? All right, next up is facilities, John?
Well, there are a lot of things going on with facilities, the Turner Group has been pretty active, they've done a complete review of our HDA-C systems in all four of the schools, and they've offered recommendations for us, which are very kindly given, funding from the, from the government, that hopefully will allow us to take some action on that, that's gonna be a big thing. We've got plans to move forward on the preparation of the parking area next to the Ridge Memorial School, there's some issues that we're trying to work out, we have a couple of quotes, and I think the facilities committee probably needs to get that together sometime in the near future, and sort through the two proposals. In addition to that, there's, the Turner Group is looking at our bathrooms, there's a plan to update bathrooms throughout the district, and get them all up to more of a modern standard. We're looking at, of course, well, we've got a number of things to look at, it's a very active plan, and I guess, the thing that's probably worth saying is that we've got a school, we've got a group of school buildings that are aging, we've decided to move forward with them, and we're looking at how we can bring them up to modern standards as best as possible, and this year may present some opportunities, certainly the availability of the money that we agreed to accept tonight, and the additional monies that Ruben mentioned, we should be hearing about shortly, gives us some opportunities, so. What else, parking lot improvements are scheduled for this summer, I guess?
Yep, so, this place, this parking lot right here, as well as the parking lots at the Ridge Memorial School. There's a safety gate that's being, well, we're trying to get it going, anyway, at the Grace School, yeah, and some fencing that needs to go on there to help traffic flow. There's just, there's an incredible lot that's going on, certainly the completion of the garage is a, is a minor issue, but that will be dealt with in the next several months.
All right.
So, yeah, just, just to piggyback a little bit on what Ruben just said, and I guess I said before that, it's, it is kind of a year of opportunity potentially, and people, all of us are busy with other things, but sometimes the opportunity presents itself, and you know, you want to be as ready as possible, so, there are a lot of things going on, and there's been discussions of how we bring the community into that, Ruben, I'm glad you mentioned the, the other building committee that includes people from the community, because we do want to build community support for what we're looking at, and hopefully, grab the initiative on some of these things and make them happen in the next 12 months.
Any questions for facilities? All right, thank you very much. Policy, I think, Ruben, you already gave a recap when we looked at policies, unless there's something else?
I think that's fine for now, I think we have some other policies that we are gonna bring forward to the policy committee, to recommend, relative to college courses and so forth, things that would have been, I think we had brought to the policy committee actually a couple years ago, and things got derailed, it's a good time to bring it back up.
Great.
Now that our systems are getting more, now that our practical processes are getting into a place where we can handle what we would put into policy.
All right, great, thanks. Okay, so we're now at the second public comment section, um, I don't know if there is any or not, we kind of already took comments in the middle of one, so, I guess, see if there's a quick comment anywhere, but.
Yeah, so quick to deal again, first name, last name, current residence, whether in person, or hopefully just raise your hands, and we can address you. All right, I am not seeing anything.
Okay. All right, anything for board matters? Okay, future items, there's always our technology plan.
Yeah, just quickly, if it's okay, Mike and I are, and Leslie to a large extent as well, are working to kind of fine-tune some things, we almost have a complete governance plan, which is what we've needed for some time, we did have to send it back to the Ad Group for final revisions, and then that will dictate, by and large, all the policy and practices, the changes over the next five years, that we'll need to be putting into the plan. When you've been in the process of either purchasing or leasing the new machines, copiers, we, you know, we would, we're not gonna lease, because if we were gonna lease, we would have to bring that to the board, that would be a change in procedure, but by doing so, and looking at the finances, we order in a certain way, we've worked on some plans to decrease the number of machines that we need, and then have started to put into a plan decreasing the amount of paper usage, as well as some very specific plans to reduce the amount of color printing, in particular, because we have $8,000 in Norwiches every single year, that's not really necessary, we have all the data on where it's all happening, and when it's happening, and such, so, we, we've been working on that, and so, that will go into the long-range fiber plan.
Great, okay, well.
In terms of future, do we have a quick update on that?
Learning management system? So, this year was a new learning management system, which is Otis, is what we, after researching the learning management system that we have gone with, the state, the state went with Canvas, which is one that like, for instance, Keene State might use, it's not a very, I would call it elementary-friendly platform, and it's not the best platform for personalization, so Otis is the one we went with, this is gonna play in the sandbox year, that's what we promoted this as, obviously, we never knew that this year was gonna be quite as intense as it was in so many ways, some people started off working with Otis, you know, the handful across the district, like going a lot deeper into it, our ELO coordinator has gotten very accustomed to the program, and has done some trainings, we've offered, they've all been, at this point, optional trainings, and we keep on sending out opportunities to get involved and kind of dabble with some of that, the first formal optional training we had, which I think was back in January, or maybe even in the fall, we have very few people who wanted to voluntarily take up that, and go to those trainings, this last time in March, we had quite a few more, so the interest is starting to peak more, and then of course we'll increase that professional development as we move into the following year, so, it's going pretty well, in all, all things considered, you know, with, with the year that we've had, and we've probably not had COVID and everything along with it, we'd probably be speeding up the process a little bit, but we're not in that shape.
Okay.
All of those items, and the improvement of the usage of that is gonna be spelled out in our five-year planning, some of it you've seen.
All right, John?
Yeah.
So, maybe this is on the board matters, I don't know, I guess, not under, well, maybe it is on the future items, but, big step today in bringing on a, a director of counseling.
Yeah.
It's a, a big change, and a positive change, I'm sure, well, and we got standardized testing coming up, and, as you told us earlier, in the middle of May, and, of course, being a crazy year that it's been, who knows how that all interacts, but, you know, obviously we started out with our strategic design, seems like a while ago now, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, we're hoping to get there, right, and so, I, I guess I'd throw it out there as a future item, you know, I know, I think we'll all be looking forward to hearing, tell your thoughts on where that goes, and, and how we worked on, you know, getting our test scores up to where we're competitive.
Yeah, yep, absolutely, so that's also aligned in the, in the planning, but I think that, as a, just specific to that, I'm actually excited to see what happens this year, after this, you know, COVID year, we already have plans for the summer, some of this work I'm putting into the CARES Act funding, so that we can provide more offerings this summer, but the school, and in particular the middle school, high school, has developed a whole process for identification of learners who need more, and to be able to provide that programming for the summertime, at the same time, we're initial, you know, this last year was the last year of test camp, so, there are a lot of things we learned from that, some things we wouldn't want to do, and repeat, and then I think that what the core, what was based upon, was really great about giving learners experiences, and deep, rich experiences, and so, we have the beginnings, not anything is elaborate, and it's really not geared to do that, of giving kids experiences that are of a STEM nature, or a STEAM nature, as well as an athletic nature, and having that be able to be happening at separate times from the academic side of some things, so that people can have a menu of things this summer to choose from, keep them busy, keep them active, help them explore some new things that perhaps they haven't done before, but also, there'll be some really strong opportunities, and, you know, there will be some requests to make certain that some students who are, you know, the data shows are falling behind, that they get a lot more support, so we'll have a lot more targeted support for them, certainly for elementary as well. So we'll have a lot more targeted support for them, certainly for elementary as well.
Good. All right.
In short, the way you improve your test results is by improving the cognitive rigor in a classroom on a regular basis across the district. And that's about higher-order thinking. So if you look at our curriculum model, which is your content, your habits of mind, some people call them word habits. And there are some habits of mind that are worth more than others to focus on, and then complex reasoning. So this complex reasoning circle right here shows it's the same size as the content circle. It's the same size as the habits of mind. I would argue that complex reasoning is significantly larger. Students who think at a different level are always going to be able to do and perform better on those types of assessments. By the way, perform on other types of assessments that are actually meaningful and not just, you know, a paper pencil or, you know, meaningful, I mean, yes, standardized testing is meaningful. I think it's absolutely need to have those benchmarks. But you're not going to be doing that in regular life all the time. So being able to problem solve is important at all, all levels. Complex reasoning is the key.
It's really exciting, you were talking about trying to reach out to learners in the summer too. And love to hear more about that.
Yeah, next time, I'm sure it's on the agenda. Yeah, we got a lot, we got a lot going on. And we, and I think that, I don't know if it was Charlie or you, you may have said it, it's been a year. It's definitely been a year, I'll just leave it at that. But it has, there has been a lot of opportunity. And we've seized a lot of opportunity and we have the, you know, I think that's been good. There has been some very positive things that we've done. And so we just need to make sure that we keep on learning and doing our best for our community.
All right. Thank you.
I make the motion that we adjourn.
Thank you Patty. Anyone want to second that?
I'm seconding it.
All right, great, thank you, and we are adjourned.